I've called the meeting to order for a Baccano County Council May sixteenth work session. I think we should do the Pledge of Leagues if you don't mind standing. Thank you. First item on the work session agenda is, of course, with the Baccano County Board of Education. Glad you're all here today. If you come forward, feel free. There's four chairs. If we need more, just bring more chairs up, however you'd like to do it. Good. How's everybody?
Good. How you doing?
Good. If you could just state your name for the public and your position.
Gene Malone, Vice President of the Board of Education.
Donna Hanlon, Superintendent of Schools.
Bruce Ford, Chief Finance and Operations Officer, and Mr. Don Fitzgerald, our President.
Dr. Hanlon, if you would like to maybe leave us off.
I'm gonna defer to Mr. Malone.
I'm gonna kick it off if that's okay.
That's great.
That's great. Well, good morning. We appreciate your time once again to discuss our funding needs for next fiscal year. We want you to know we don't take this lightly, and we know you don't either. We appreciate the partnership that we have had and continue to have in looking at education and how to improve it. It has been and continues to be a collaborative effort between the BOE and the County Council. Dr. Hanlon has established priorities in the Imagine 2022 Plan that we have approved and believe to be the pathway to making our schools a place all parents aspire to have their children attending. Again, my colleagues and I on the Board of Ed, thank you for your cooperation, your partnership, and your collaboration, and at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Hanlon.
Good morning, everyone. So, obviously, we want to spend the majority of our time talking about the FY19 budget, but I do want to begin this morning just to bring closure to some of the questions that were asked at the previous work session with the council. The first question was about gift card expenditures, and you should have all received a link yesterday to our transparency portal with that report. Hopefully, those of you who have reviewed that report see that we are indeed following our policy and procedures, that we are spending, on average, $6,000 a year for students and volunteers, which is within our policy. And most of the funding that's spent is actually funding that is raised by students through fundraisers to support our schools. So hopefully, that resolves that question.
You said you had a hundred dollar limit on gift cards. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
You got one here that's a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So you've gone over your limit on one.
Is that a single gift card?
Yeah. Well, you wrote six of them for a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Well, it's probably twenty-five dollars each is what I would guess, perhaps.
Amount of cards is a hundred and twenty-five dollars times six is seven hundred and fifty dollars. So you exceeded your limit there.
Okay, we'll follow up on that.
We'll follow up on it. Thank you for raising my attention.
And I asked for three years of activity. Only got one.
You should have gotten three. There's three years there.
Fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, and seventeen, eighteen year to date. Should be six pages there. Yeah, there's a total at the end of each year.
Victoria's Secret. Gift card for Victoria's Secrets?
I can't speak to specifically what that is.
I'm just questioning whether that would pop up.
I understand. Yeah.
It's allowed the norm for.
It's a clothing store.
A board. Yeah, I realize. I realize that. So also asked for P-card purchases, and I've never received any.
Right, and I'm gonna address that, Mr. Holloway. The second question that you raised at the last work session was about meals specifically, meals specifically. And you'll recall that in the last work session, we explained that meals is a subset of the general line item for all training conferences and meetings. We also shared that that total line item is 0.15% of our budget, which is below the industry standard of 1% to 2% of an organization's budget. And that within that category, again, meals is within that category, and we're estimating meals to be approximately 20% of that total line item. As Superintendent, I am responsible for resource management. I'm responsible for how staff spend their time. And knowing the previous conversation and the emphasis on the fact that at some point, the council was told that it's the push of a button, I went back to staff and I asked, please show me what you mean by, or what could be meant by the push of a button, or what would actually be involved in getting this information. And I can tell you that it is hours and hours, days, by multiple people for the amount of work that would be required to go into the document, excuse me, documentation that was within each expenditure for meals to determine that. I also want to emphasize that we do have policies and procedures, internal protocols, to make sure that expenditures are appropriate. For example, thanks, John. For example, we had a director recently go to a conference where the initial paperwork was turned in indicating that all of the meals were included in the conference price. When he got there, he learned that lunch was not included and that he was on his own. He went to McDonald's. And actually, I know about this because he was upset about what happened, and that was someone from within our finance department who's responsible for part of the checks and balances on these policies and procedures, went to him and said, what is this $10 at McDonald's? And so that was resolved. I think he actually ended up paying for it to just resolve it. I could give you numerous examples. My point is that we are not hiding anything, but I have to decide, and I know that's how it's perceived, I have to decide the appropriate use of staff time. And I do not believe that this is appropriate use of staff time. However, I would like to do something that I would consider even better, and that is inviting you to come in and sit with us to go through any items that you have a question about. It would do two things. It would give you a greater understanding of the amount of work and the comment that was made previously that it's the push of a button, because it isn't, and give you an opportunity that if you come across an expenditure like Victoria's Secret, or something that sounds like it's a wrong expenditure, that we have an opportunity to talk about it rather than just have you review a written report. So that's my response to that question at this point. We've talked about it as a board, and we are in agreement at this point that we believe that the best way to handle that request is to ask you to come in, any council member, really, and many of you have taken us up on this. At any point that you're interested in talking with us about anything, we welcome that dialogue. So specifically about this, any one of you or group of you.
It's not as much about the question of any expenditure versus Victoria's Secret that's kind of unsettling, I guess you could call it. But from 4/11, 4/11, 2011 to 4/9, 2013, we've received a report from you.
Right.
And it was $164,000 for purchases at Domino's, Taylor's. I'm not gonna go through all of those because a lot of different companies. It didn't seem to be a big problem to put that together then. I got it within days of asking for it. If something changed in your system that allows you not to be able to provide that information now.
I'm gonna be able to speak to how they generated that from that point. I wasn't.
Yeah, it was a time-consuming task.
I guess the other question I have is, if it's that much trouble to find out what's going on, how do you know what's going on? How do you, where's your controls at?
That's what I was describing earlier, Mr. Holloway.
That's what we'd like for you to come in and see, exactly all that we have in place, from application controls to environmental controls to various internal controls, that meet and exceed current audit standards, and we'd love to be able to show that to you firsthand.
You know, I just have a hard time. We've had all these folks come up here and speak at the council meeting, public hearing. All I'm asking for is accountability. Nobody ever mentioned that. No person that stood at that podium mentioned accountability and spending. I get teachers, I get staff from your BOE telling me things, that they come to me because I know I won't mention their names. They explain, you know, teachers come, I would have worked longer. I wouldn't retire so soon. You know, the spending's out of control. Of course, I go into other issues too, issues about administration. We talked about that, not backing them up when they had problems, but it's a different subject we're talking about now. So that's where my problem is, you know.
Well, I invite you to come in.
And the history shows, you know, when the General Services came in and did their audit, it didn't work out so good.
And as we've pointed out before, we adjusted all of our procurement policies and procedures to address those concerns, and I believe we have instituted the controls that if you would come in, we'll be glad to show you and answer any questions that you have while you're sitting there looking at the screen.
You certainly put a wall in my court house.
Yes, we have.
Good way to get off.
Well, no, it's not a matter to get off.
We're trying to use time efficiently.
We've had other council members come, and we have an open-door policy. We are transparent, and we want to show you and the rest of the community what we do.
How do we know? We are day-to-day, as each item is occurring, making sure that our checks and balances are in place. Another example, this morning, before I came here, I approved a pro-card use by an expenditure for a board member to attend a lunch in the community. And that was an appropriate use of that board member's time, but I approved that.
But you just sit here and said you had, you put all these policies in place, and you've got a hundred dollar limit on gift cards, and I'm just sitting here telling you, you've just approved gift cards for a hundred and twenty-five.
And we're gonna go back and look at it and.
Your policy's really working.
Well, again, that's one transaction over three years' worth of transactions. We'll definitely go back and take.
That's one transaction out of the gift cards.
Right, and that's what you'd ask for.
Okay, so moving into the FY19 budget, Mr. Malone talked about Imagine 2022, and I just want to start off by saying that I believe that Imagine 2022 is exactly what the community asked for when I was hired as Superintendent. A vision and a specific plan for moving our school system forward, and that's what's been provided. I hope, as I indicated in my closing comments at the hearing, that you see the critical nature of the turning point at this point. I believe that I was hired to lead this school system and not to manage the status quo, and that's really what I want to do, but I need your help. So in our budget, we were very specific about requests that are tied to our three strategic priorities, and I just want to highlight those again, in case you haven't had a chance to review them in detail. Hopefully, you have. But the first priority is found on page 66 of our budget, and that is Phase One of the implementation of universal pre-kindergarten. I've talked before, I've talked in the public and talked with you all about the importance of the implementation of universal pre-kindergarten, especially in our community where we have such a high percentage of at-risk population, we're the fifth highest in the state of at-risk population. We need to be working with these students as early as we possibly can because of the critical turning point by the time students are in third grade, that they need to be reading on grade level.
What are the at-risk? I mean, is there a specific definition?
Yes, there is. That's a state definition, and it includes students who are special education, students who are English language learners, and students who are free and reduced meals.
That wouldn't fall under the birth to 21 program?
Special education is within that.
That at-risk percentage is what, 76%?
Seventy-five percent. Almost seventy-six percent.
Almost seventy-six percent when you combine those three categories.
Seventy-six percent of our.
Of our student population. Yeah.
Yes. Now, that percentage could reflect students who are both farms, free and reduced meals, and special ed, so there could be some overlap. But that's the way that that, those definitions are applied, are consistent across the state.
And that's the fifth largest in the state.
Did you say to EOL students too?
Yes.
Dr. Hanlon?
Because they require additional resources.
They're at risk of graduating.
Because of their language barrier.
Because the language barrier, so puts them at risk.
They don't compute their mental state. I mean, they could be smart, but they just.
That's absolutely correct.
Two questions, John.
Yeah, Dr. Hanlon, when you proposed your budget, did you take into account that the state would provide 50% of the pre-K?
The state is, hasn't.
For the first year.
Did I take into account that they're going to? No.
Okay.
No, because we didn't at the time, and we now know that for next year, they're not going to provide any additional funding. There are some grant funds that are going to become available through the Kerwin Commission legislation, which they're calling Kerwin Light because the Kerwin Commission hasn't finished its work, but it's more general, and it is for, gosh, I'm trying to remember, 50 schools, I believe, across the state in Title I schools for pre-K to grade eight. Not a lot of funding either, so I think they're moving in the right direction, and I do believe that Kerwin sees the value in universal pre-kindergarten, and that at some point, I'm hopeful, that there will be a change in the way that funding is allocated across the state, but I don't believe that we can afford to wait.
And the only specific state aid for pre-K was afforded to four jurisdictions in Maryland that had universal pre-K already.
Oh, okay.
That's the only specific state aid that has been sent to the locals for pre-K.
Because it was 50% in the first year for jurisdictions that already had universal pre-K, and those systems are Somerset, Garrett, and Kent. And, you know, speaking to their success, those school systems are three out of the four top-scoring systems now on the kindergarten readiness assessment.
For the public's knowledge, can you just quickly explain the difference between what you categorize as pre-K and universal pre-K?
Yes.
Just to the understanding.
Yes. Universal pre-K by definition is when there is access to all students in the community to attend as a four-year-old all day. So it doesn't mean that it's mandatory, but we provide the access. We're anticipating about 80% may take advantage of it.
As opposed to pre-K, which is isolated only to the at-risk, is that correct?
That's correct, and in many cases in our schools right now, it's half-day.
Okay. All right, because that's, I think, clearly needs to be defined.
I know. We use that language and make assumptions of people. Yes, we do. We know that.
And part of what John had said, so the 1.363 million, is that, I'm guessing that is all county funding that you're requiring, that you're, because early on, I was getting very confused between the 7.3 and the 3.2, whatever, but that 1.363 is specifically Baccano County funding requested. Am I right?
Well, here's the way, in simple math, we're asking for approximately $7 million in total for the year, new money. $2 million is coming from the state, $5 million we need from the county. That's, in simple numbers, that's how to look at it. So if you want to say the 1-3 would be local, fine. It's just that we've got $7 million we're asking for new over the prior year, and they're articulated in those three priorities. We're getting $2 million additional from the state. That leaves $5 million that the county would have to fund.
Right, but if we're trying to just break it down and isolate pre-K, because that is the hot button, I think, for 90% of the public, is that number truly 1.3 for the county, or is that a number smaller than 1.3 for county funding?
Well, again, what we could say is that if you look at that Priority One, which is 1-3, Priority Two, which is 2.3, and Priority Three, which is 3.6, the sum of those three is over $7 million. We're getting $2 million new money from the state. That leaves a shortfall of $5 million, and we've asked for that $5 million from the Rock County.
I'm gonna go into some specific detail when I get to Priority Three. That might help you with the answer to that.
Okay.
Okay, so come back to it if you're still not satisfied with the answer, but.
Well, could I jump on John's thing here, and maybe I'll need to wait. So the total for pre-K this year is 1.3 million. You'll get $2 million in new money from the state, so presumably, you could use 1.3 of that $2 million for universal pre-K without a local match.
Presumably, if we fund nothing else, including teachers raises.
Okay, that's, okay.
Presumably. Will that help?
And I think she's gonna articulate that.
Right, okay. Any other questions about the universal pre-K?
And remember, this is Phase One. This is only Phase One.
What you're calling Phase Two is still in Year One though, right?
No.
One-time only?
That's in order to be able to provide the facilities for Phase Two.
For Phase Two.
That's a request in year.
Phase Two is still in Year One.
A request for facility.
For the facility, the one-time funding.
So my question about universal pre-K is, if this gets implemented, what do you see the readiness by Year Three, or by Grade Three, three-year readiness? I guess that's how you're planning on measuring this?
Oh, absolutely.
So I guess, what are we at now? What would you see it rising to, and what sort of timeframe, once this goes into effect? In other words, how do we know that this is, if we put this in place, it's going to achieve your goal, and how do we, you know, hold your feet to the fire?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. I'll hold my own feet to the fire and staff's feet to the fire, because I do believe it works. So first of all, we'll be keeping a close eye on the kindergarten readiness assessment data as we move forward to determine, you know, their readiness when they reach kindergarten. But as we've had this conversation with Mr. Hall, we also understand that it isn't just about what happens between kindergarten, between pre-K and kindergarten, that it, the ultimate goal, I mean, the ultimate goal is graduation, but we'll be keeping a close eye on third grade. And the way we do that is by measuring students specifically reading levels several times a year. We already do that. But by implementing universal pre-K, we will be expecting in teachers in kindergarten who maybe haven't taught students at a readiness level, that those students may be coming at, and in first grade, and in second grade, to first of all, adjust their instruction, to meet the students where they are. It won't, it'll be a change. We'll be measuring kindergarten, I mean, we'll be, sorry, measuring those students' reading levels as we go along, looking for a greater percentage of students who are reading on grade level by the time they get to third grade, and it's not just in third grade. It's in kindergarten, it's in first grade, it's in second grade, and we'll be monitoring those results as we move forward.
But what's, do you have specific numbers in mind, as in, you know, we put this in place, let's say, next year?
I don't, I know, I can't tell you specifically. We've talked before, but it's not a number in my head about the percentage of students who are reading on grade level.
I don't know off the top.
We'll, I mean, obviously, that's what we're gonna measure. I just don't have those numbers in front of me. The percentage of kindergarten readiness increased this year to 46%. So we'll be watching that.
Yeah, I mean, it's good to set things, you know, beforehand, I mean, you know, because it's going up without pre-K, so, you know, it will probably continue to go up, even if, you know, we do it or we don't do it. So we put pre-K in place, we could capture some of that natural rise. It would be good, you know, to get you on the record now to say, no, it'll go up by this much, and then in four years, say, all right, wait a sec, you know, you made all those promises and it didn't, or you achieved it, so it would be good to know that.
I think what will, in fact, I know what will happen, is that with the implementation of universal pre-kindergarten, there will be an expectation that school improvement teams, or instructional leadership teams, I believe is what they're called now, in each school, they write school improvement plans, and they look at measurable goals within their own schools. So it would be my expectation that they would be setting those targets. We will as a system as well, but individual schools will also be monitoring those results.
It would be good to have.
Those three or four jurisdictions that you mentioned that already had the universal pre-K, how many years have they had that?
This will, I know that they had, this is, this, next year will be the third year of the funding through the legislation, and they already had it. I want to say Somerset County had it a year or two prior to that. I can't tell you that for sure. I can tell you, I had a conversation with Dr. Karen Couch, who's the superintendent in Kent County, and she was very, she's very anxious for next year, and having backward mapped to see how many years that is. Those students will be in third grade to see, you know.
We'll be able to look at some of their metrics and probably use that to map where we should be, hopefully, at an average in those four.
Great points.
The three programs that you mentioned, including Somerset County, that already had pre-K, what were the markers? You said they had great success to, what was it, kindergarten, third grade? I forgot what you said.
Kindergarten readiness assessment data. I was only speaking specifically to that, which is the assessment that all systems across the state.
How did that reflect with the third-grade marker?
I can, as I just mentioned with Dr. Couch, she's anxious to see the third-grade marker this FY19.
You didn't get any information from our sister county, Somerset?
No, I have not. I have not. You're welcome. The information that I've read about it has been more global, the research that's out about the benefit of universal pre-K. Right. Okay, so the second priority is, it encompasses a number of specific requests, because as you can imagine, the goal of increasing graduation rate is more than just one thing that we're gonna do. There are numerous things that we need to do, but as you've heard me say before, our graduation rate, while it's improving, is not where it needs to be. We need to be graduating more students. My goal would be reaching at ultimately 90% or above.
What was that again, 83%?
It was 83% in 2016. It was 84%. Thank you. Double checking myself. 84% in 17.
Okay, so it is increasing.
It is increasing, but we're still down near the bottom. I want to say we're second, second to the last in the state. So we have a number of initiatives within that priority, mostly having to do with English language learners, special education, there's an item in there about class size, behavioral, social, and emotional supports for students that we see as being critically important. Turn to that.
Page 67.
Yes, thank you. It's page 67 of your budget, I believe I've, and the Signature Academies that I've spoken about before that I believe will, I'm just having a conversation with someone in the lobby before coming in here this morning. The Signature Academies are not meant to be magnet programs, although we've talked before that I do believe in the value of a magnet program. Next year, the implementation of the Project Lead the Way program at Salisbury Middle is meant to engage additional students in relevant instruction.
And that's the inclusion of the STEM program or the expansion of STEM?
That's correct. That's correct. So that's a little bit of funding. So that's a little bit of funding. We don't need additional staff to do that. But a little bit of funding for professional development materials is in that. And then some additional, the additional program of the visual and performing arts theater curriculum and the interactive media program as part of our CTE programs. We believe strongly, again, in the value of CTE programs because those programs have proven to engage students. Because it's what, it's areas of passion for those students that they want to study, so.
Based on that, are you starting to develop programs more oriented towards the CTE programs since we're seeing less emphasis put on attending college? And the CTE programs would enforce the trades more?
There is, that's a part of it.
So are you developing more programs to encompass these?
We are, we are having discussions with that. In fact, Brian Ashby, who's our supervisor of CTE, is working closely with the task force having to do with, and I'm going to draw on a blank now, but Katerina Enderfelt and looking at.
Trade.
The trades, yes, thank you. So those are important. All students aren't going to go to college. And there's definitely a need for programming within our CTE program for, again, engaging students where they need to be. And the third area of.
If you're.
Oh, please, sorry.
So in your first priority, I can understand, you know, you're getting a new group of students in. Might be need for more funding. The second area is basically talking about doing things differently for your current population of students. So if you're dealing with the same number of students essentially in this, you're not talking about, you know, new students coming in like in pre-K. I guess my question is, why can't these goals be accomplished by shifting around existing resources? You know, for instance, you know, hiring the teacher for the performing arts. Well, you're, if you have the kids going into the performing arts program, you're taking them from other classrooms around the county. So there would be presumably, you know, need for one less teacher elsewhere, you know. I mean, if the number, I understand, it's not exactly a one-on-one sort of thing. But you know, but it's, again, you know, if, to me, this seems, you know, this seems like good ideas to do. Obviously, you know, I mean, I think, you know, you and I are on the same page on some of these things. But if we're dealing with the same population of students, why can't you shift resources from how they're being served now into doing these things, which seem like a better way of doing it? So stop doing the old way, do the new way, this way, so.
So the best way I know to answer that question, and I'll defer to Mr. Ford as well, but the whole budget process, a lot of time was spent on how can we redeploy current resources? And we did a lot of that. I don't remember the total amount we did with that. These are resources beyond what we, we had, we were at a point where we didn't see other areas that we could cut. And I wish that students came in nice neat little boxes and you could move one teacher from one program to another. But that's not the case, especially when you're pulling students from across the county. You know that. So we do what you're suggesting all the time. And we believe that we did a lot of that. These are requests beyond what we believe we can cut. We did not find other areas from which we can cut. I don't know, do you want to add to that, Mr. Ford?
It's part of the realignment process that we do every year that we request and require of all of our budget managers. And again, the majority of these FTEs in this request represent what a lot of people refer to as supplemental services, or wraparound services that many of these students need in order to be successful. Dealing with mental health, we have guidance counselors. We have, we have the ESOL work teachers that, our ESOL population has just really grown significantly. So these students, in order to be successful, must have these supplemental support structures in place.
And another point, and it wouldn't apply to every one of these line items, but for instance, I focused on the online lab teacher at Choices Academy. That's an initiative to try to keep students in school. So hopefully, some of these will mean an increased population because students aren't dropping out, which makes a difference in our graduation rate, obviously.
Yeah, well, I mean, with increased population of students comes increased funding, I mean, automatic increased funding, doesn't there? From the state and the county, from the formula. So as you grow the student population, you automatically get more money from us and from the state. So then the one thing that I did notice is, this might be a little bit off track, is that over the past, I think it's been four years or so, you've had about, estimated enrollment growth of about four hundred students or so, you know, four or five years. But you've had a hundred and seventy-six new positions that came on. And so, you know, that's about seventy-four teachers and ninety-seven other staff from what I can make out in the figures. So, I mean, it seems to me that, you know, you're growing staff and doing these things. So I like the direction you're going. I guess my, you know, I'd say, why can't, if it's such a good idea, why can't it have been accomplished with, you know, some of the hiring of these seventy-four other teachers or ninety-seven other staff? You know, I mean, that, that's, I'm just wondering about that, trying to figure out the most cost-effective way to do things.
Thought that, I don't know if I was reading it correctly or not. I thought that the enrollment from your statistics in the book with enrollment is going down. That's not correct?
No.
Is there a page in the book that shows that?
Yes, one eighty-three. Is it the blue column that's current year, projection? Previous year total is all the way to the right-hand side, so where's current year?
Yeah, the previous year total, if you look at the top, previous year total was fourteen thousand eight eighty-nine. Top right, the left-hand corner there, and total, current year, fourteen nine fifty-three. See those totals there? The blue column is FTE, which is full-time equivalent. It doesn't, it doesn't do headcount. It takes into consideration those kids that are half-day, and it only counts them as a point five. So that's what the blue.
Okay, so what I compare is the number at the bottom, the previous year total to.
Yeah, if you look at the previous year, total was fourteen eight eighty-nine.
Yeah.
And the total in current year is fourteen nine fifty-three.
Okay.
Because the FTE, the blue column, is just full-time equivalent. So it doesn't count the half-time.
So do we know what the, I don't know if it's a significant figure, but do we know what the full-time enrollment was for last year compared to this year?
It was, the FTE calculation was, I think, only at point five FTE because FTE doesn't count pre-K, and we've picked up pre-K students. That's why you see the increase from fourteen eighty-nine to fourteen nine fifty-three.
Well, pre-K is listed in here, though, in the same chart. But that doesn't apply to the FTE over the right-hand corner?
No, again, FTE, remember, for state aid purposes, we, number one, can't count FTE for pre-K. Only half is all, because we have many classes where it's only half.
So I should be looking at the total column and not the FTE column?
That's correct, you know, when you compare. That's correct, that's right.
I was looking at the, and just tagging what Mark was saying. I was looking at the number for priority two of FTE. That's thirty-three employees. And I was going to ask, when was the last time you hired that many employees at once? But I guess it's not hard to figure out, if you said a hundred and seventy-six in four years. Second question, the ESOL, isn't there federal grants to assist with ESOL?
Yes.
And is that included in your priority request?
All federal grants are in the consolidated current expense budget, yeah. And it's miniscule, the amount of federal dollars that we get for ESOL, miniscule.
So after redoing these numbers, it looks like the total number has increased by sixty-four?
That's correct.
Okay.
While you're talking about grants, one of the line items you had was the source of income was down seven point five three percent. And I assume they were grants that were funded in the past that were not funded?
That's correct, sir.
And there are no replacements, were there?
No, sir.
One's a disparity grant, right?
The, many of the grants are contingent upon legislation at the federal level. And ESSA has changed, the Elementary Secondary Education Act has changed a lot of that. So, and a lot of it also is, you have to apply, and then you have to be accepted. So we're constantly looking for ways to take in additional federal resources when we can.
So if I'm getting this right, it looks like we've increased with the pre-K. We're increasing about sixty-eight students. And the total increase is sixty-four. So maybe we're increasing, we've lost four, for what difference makes, four total enrollments. But we've added a difference with the sixty-eight pre-K?
That's correct, pre-K is going up.
Okay. All right.
You got it.
Any other questions about priority two? Okay, priority three is on page sixty-eight. And here's where I wanted to, I just want to point out in this priority that while we have a goal, this is, again, phase one, while we have a goal to recruit and retain a high-performing workforce, which to me is more than just salaries and benefits, that's what's included in priority three. It's the cost of doing business. It is, we have bargaining agreements with all three of our bargaining units. Tentative agreements, you know, pending budget, obviously. And those entail a one percent cost of living to teachers and administrators and a step where they qualify, and a one point five percent increase for our classified employees who we believe are underpaid. So that dollar amount that you see there, again, is the cost of doing business. And when, when we look at what we're getting from the state and what we're getting with MOU. MOE, thank you. We, we believe it's important that we honor our bargaining agreements. That's a high priority. All of these are high priorities for us. But even with what we're getting from the state and MOE, we still won't be there. So hopefully, you know, that's why we're still presenting to you all three of our major priorities. Because, you know, the first dollar above MOE will still go towards funding our teachers. Cost of living and step.
You know, there's no doubt that more money helps get more people. But that's not the root of your problem. The root of your problem is that, from what I hear from the teachers, there's no support from the administration. You know, teachers leave, leave the board of, you know, I explained to you about one that came to Wycomico County, was lured away by more money, stayed a year and left, and went back to the county. They were from, you know, I hear from other teachers, they send students to the office, sent back, you deal with it. You know, I have teachers come in the store that tell me that, you know, they've gone to work somewhere else. And now they feel like they can teach and.
And we pay attention to that. We do pay attention to that.
It's not being addressed or solved.
It may not be totally, that's exactly right. But it is being addressed. And when we hear about it, we address it. I think, to some extent, you're making some generalizations.
No, I'm not making generalizations. I'm referring to you when I'm being told.
Right, but generalizations, that is not how all teachers in our school system feel.
Not all of them do. But when I have a teacher told me that she could work five more years, but she retired because she just could not put up with what was going on. Not only that, she couldn't get supplies in room to work with, you know. So that reflects back on where money's being spent elsewhere. So, you know, it's not just one.
No, it may not be one, I know, I know. I hear what you're saying, and that's why I began by saying it, this is just the cost of doing business. It doesn't address additional mentoring programs and other things that we need, that we know are important to recruit and retain a high-performing workforce. I'm not ignoring what you're describing. We need to be concerned. I think there's a concern across the country about morale with teachers because of all the pressures that.
But when you have a teacher leave one county and go back to the county she worked at before, and she says, I didn't have that problem in Worcester County, and I went back to that. But I couldn't survive in Wycomico. I couldn't teach because I had no support from the administration. When I'd send a student out of the room, they'd send them back.
Again, that's a generalization.
I think a lot of that just fall out from prior administration, because I heard a lot of that, a lot of it was private administration.
They're trying to, I think, align that with judicial, judiciary review that was in place at the time. I do say that in this year's budgets, it looks like under instructional salaries and wages, you're saying it's up four to six point six percent. Textbooks and instructions are up fifteen point five. And administrative is really only up point thirty-three. So I thought that was interesting, that you are applying so many resources to instructional salaries and wages and textbooks and supplies. Those are big increases there. And it looks like administrative management is quite a lot less.
I've been sitting voiceless since April sixth, and I can't sit here anymore today. Joe Holloway, I guarantee you, I hear more positive things than you hear negative about teachers, and I do.
I hope you do, Don.
But I'm going to tell you something. You're in a minority. I want to know if we had a teacher not getting what she needs. But do you call and let somebody know?
I'm asked not to reveal their names.
We don't need to know a name, we don't need to know a name. I don't give names.
Every time you come to the table, I tell you all this.
We don't have to come to the table. Pick up the phone. Let's be positive. Let's try to, if we got a mistake going on in our system, let's address it. But don't make it look bad and be negative. Let's be positive.
I'm revealing to you what I'm being told.
And I'm sitting here trying to be, because I'm not supposed to be talking, but I cannot sit here and hear the negativity. I'm sorry. This system has come so far in two years because of that leadership sitting there. For me to sit here and let you be negative, I'm sorry, thank you.
And based on that, I'll say some good things then. Thanks, Don. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the time that you gave me last week. And you certainly appreciate it, it was a lot of time. And I appreciate the collaboration with Warwick also, which we haven't talked about. Your website, again, I think, is very transparent, and it's very easy to work through. And I realize that you only get forty-one percent of the general funds from Wycomico County, which is historically low as far as other counties in the state. And I don't think you have to address that, I think it's just a fact.
Well, and I would like to just make sure that everybody understands that it isn't forty-one percent. It's much lower than that. Forty-one percent is all of education, which includes the library, Warwick, extension services. And included in that forty-one percent is our debt service. We're the only area of the budget where debt service is included in our piece of the pie. You have a debt service piece of the pie in the budget booklet. But for some reason, education is pulled out of that and it's put with, so it's more like twenty-eight to twenty-nine percent.
Thank you.
Didn't mean to prep you, but.
We appreciate that. Thanks for straightening me out. And again, I'd like to speak to what Mr. Councilman Joe Holloway said. The teachers that I've talked to are basically, are more than basically satisfied with their position, their role, and what they're, what support they're getting. And when I say satisfied, I know that the attrition rate that you have is typically fifteen percent, which, again, is a national average. So it's not anything unusual to see fifteen percent of the education population move to a different place. And they're going to be disgruntled employees in that fifteen percent. I don't see anything wrong with it, really. But again, the teachers that I've talked to have all been very, very positive and very supportive of the administrative staff. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll go off that theme a little bit. So, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we had our public hearing here. And I think we heard a lot of negativity there. You know, I mean, there was a lot of people who were standing up there saying, you know, younger people, we don't know if we're going to send our kids to Wycomico schools. I mean, there was, you know, someone called me up afterwards and saying, that's not a very good message for people to be standing up and saying to the public. I mean, that, you know, the business community and, you know, younger people saying, you know, we're looking at private school, we're looking at not sending our kids to public school. So, you know, there's, you know, whether, you know, it's not the negativity. I mean, and look, I have my two kids in public school, and I talk up Wycomico schools all the time. I mean, we, our son was, he was a day, day past the cutoff for school. So we had to fight to get him into Wycomico schools, so. So, you know, we, we're a big believer in the quality of public schools, but there's, there's an impression out there.
Yes, there is.
And it's not, it's not Joe Holloway, you know, there, there's a public impression that's negative about Wycomico public schools, and we heard that during the budget presentation, or during, during the public hearing. So, so, you know, I, I think we need to be clear about where negativity is coming from. And there's also the impression that, and I know it's, I know it's not the, your specific message, but it's a message that, that we hear, the impression we get is, you know, these school, you know, Wycomico schools are bad, which I don't agree with, that's the wrong message, but, you know, and, and that's because the county doesn't fund it appropriately. It's because the second law is funding in the state, you know, that kind of stuff. And I think what there's some pushback on this side of the table is, is that, well, is it, is it the funding level? Or is it how funding is spent, or is it other things? And there's maybe a combination of the three, but I think, you know, we're focused on budget, obviously, that's, we're focused on the money. But, you know, if we, if we found eight million dollars to give to Wycomico County Public Schools, which, you know, we're not gonna be able to do that, let's, let's be honest about that. But if, even if we found that, there would still, there would still be teachers that have problem with their student, the student discipline in school. There would still, if we found that eight million dollars, I don't think that it would, you know, change the fact that some of the people, you know, that stood up and spoke are gonna be sending their, you know, at the budget hearing, are gonna be sending their kids to private school. So, you know, Wycomico County has a lot of issues in the school system, you know.
In the county.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, in the county, I mean, you know, the schools are a manifestation of that. We are focused right now on how much funding Wycomico County gives to public schools, how much the county government funds the public schools. If you look at overall funding, Wycomico County is about the middle of the pack, it's about fourteen thousand dollars or so, you know, total per pupil spending around Anne Rundle County, around Kent County, you know, I, I believe, you know, this comparable to a lot of school systems that have, I think, a better per, public perception, whether that perception's real or not. And, you know, that is something that we need to figure out, is the return on education investment. There was a small paragraph in your, you know, in your budget about that, talk about return of education investment. But, you know, we don't look at how we do, the, the amount that we spend per pupil and the results that we get compared to some of these other counties that are comparable to us, and, you know, how, how we do compared to them. I, I think that'd be an interesting measure, is their return in educational investment, their return in terms of graduation rate, in terms of test scores, based on what they spend and what we spend. Total, total per pupil funding, not, not local, local, you know, local dollars aren't magic dollars, they spend the same as dollars from the state or the feds. And, you know, it would be interesting to see, you know, for instance, Baltimore. Baltimore city gets a lot more per pupil fund, you know, spending than, than we do. I'd say we have a lot better system than they have, you know, a lot better school system. I moved out of Washington DC, they have, they spend, they were spending over twenty thousand dollars per pupil a year ten years ago. You know, they're spending a lot more than that now, their school system's horrible, you know. And so it's not per pupil spending is a factor, but it's not the determining factor. And, and, you know, we, we get a lot of negativity about our per pupil funding, you know, we, we got a lot of negativity about that. And I think that there's a lot more to look at in terms of what people are concerned about. It's not, you know, we go above maintenance of effort, again, I don't think that's gonna cure the ills of Wycomico County Public Schools, and I wish we would get off that sort of thing. And we need to talk about some of these other issues, like the issues Joe raised. Even if it's a minority, it's a real minority, you know, of teachers that have a problem and parents that have a problem. I hear from, the same sort of things from parents. So, so, you know, there, there's plenty of negativity to go around, and it's not just coming from Joe, and it's not just coming from some disgruntled teachers, it's coming from the community, and we heard that. It's directed at us, and that's fine, you know, we're, we're the ones who have to spend the money, so... But, you know, let's, if we're gonna focus, talk about negativity, let's, let's talk about all the negativity, and let's, let's maybe focus more on the positivity and what we can do then, and how we can fix some of these problems. And it's not all money, it's not all money, so...
Well, I agree with you, it isn't all money. But I think when you do a study where you look at graduation rates and so forth, across per pupil spending and so forth, you also need to consider in that analysis, the percentage of at-risk students in a given school system. I think that's critically important to be considered. And I don't, you know, because we're sitting here talking about money and the importance of investing in our community, I don't think that, you know, I, I hope that you don't have the impression that I'm not focused on the negative perception out there. I've been focused on that since day one that I walked into this school system, because it isn't the reality in most cases, as your experience speaks to, so...
I, I do wanna point out something on the negativity, but it's not really negative. You know, I served on the board five years, an outgoing board member told me that, because I had some concern about what was going on at the time in the school system, and they told me if you were gonna send your kids to a middle school or to a private school, middle school's when you wanna do it. So I toured all the middle schools, again, and I know they knew I was coming, because everything was, the hallways were clean, everybody was on their best behavior, but I knew about the school systems. And my kids ended up going to Bennett Middle School, the old Bennett Middle School, the one that's torn down. And I tell you what, they had the best education you can get from a middle school. Now, I did hear problems, personnel problems, which is totally different than the education they're getting. My kids are in eleventh grade now, and they will be going to college, they're going to Parkside now, so they are getting a good education. So the education in Park, uh, at Parkside and Wycomico County Public Schools is probably one of the best in the state. There's probably gonna be people disagree with me, but my kids are an example, so I, I did want to point that out.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I agree with you. Okay, before we finish, I, I know that you all are aware, well aware of your options. You've, you've talked publicly about, you know, how can we possibly make something happen? But as we've reviewed, I just want to point out what we see as options that would be available to you for being a partner with us and helping us start to move the needle. And so I, I just wanna point those out to you first. As you've commented, you can find money within the current proposed budget, or find money within the current fund balance to support our schools. But I also wanna make sure that you're aware that there is a provision in the law, and I brought my school law book, and hopefully you are aware of this, Bruce even made copies for you, that it was passed in twenty-twelve, where counties that have a restriction on revenue have the ability to, um, through this law, and I'm waiting for it to come out, it's found in, in Article Five, Section one-oh-four. And that section is titled, "Tax Levy to Meet Appropriations: Payments for Local Funds; Power of County to Set Higher Property Tax Rate." It's subsection D, and it states in essence, "A governing body sets a county property tax rate that is greater than the rate authorized under the county's charter or collects more property tax revenues than the revenues authorized under the county's charter. The county," and this is Roman numeral two, "shall appropriate to the county board all property tax revenues exceeding the amount that would have been available if the county charter limitations had been applied." I just wanna point out that Talbot County takes advantage of this provision of the law. They have the exact same revenue cap that we do here, and in FY nineteen, it's our understanding that their council has authorized a two-cent increase, which amounts to one-point-five million dollars for their public schools. They call that, they refer to it as their education supplement. Next year will be the third year that they have applied this provision of the law. And, and we just wanna make sure that you're aware of that provision of the law, that you as a council have the option to do that. It doesn't require a change in the charter, it doesn't require a change in the revenue cap, and it, it doesn't require a referendum. Even a penny added to the current rate would provide six-hundred thousand dollars to your public schools. All it does take is forward-thinking leadership. So, and then a fourth area would be to change how the recommended budget funds capital improvement projects, and you may have already discussed this as well. But the county executive's budget recommended seven-point-three million dollars of the fund balance go to Pago for capital improvement projects. At the same time, the proposed budget doesn't exhaust the county's self-imposed limitation, borrowing power on limitation, which is twelve percent, does not exhaust that twelve percent, it's ten point... Ten-point-four percent. So another option would be to balance your budget by using additional borrowing power for your capital improvement projects, freeing up the funds that would have been used for Pago to help us in funding some of our requests and still have a balanced budget. Any response, any thoughts on the options, are you aware of those options and...
I think we're aware, everyone's aware of the first option.
The first option, definitely.
Everybody's aware of the first option.
Right.
I think we always held very closely to the fact of the population that initiated the revenue cap. The revenue cap is a huge target, but the revenues in Wycomico County have increased substantially. I think probably seventeen million over the last two years. So it's not in a situation, I think, of the fact that the revenue cap is restricting our funding, it's just as how it's been applied, where that funding has been applied. And I think that's what...
Wanna make sure that you...
I understand, no, we appreciate that.
Yeah, 'cause that's, that's not, that option in the law is not something that's been talked about much.
Right, and that was, I mean, not to be cynical, but that option was...
Maybe by you it has.
That was an option that was created in, in the state legislature, it wasn't, it wasn't implemented on a local level.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, yeah, it's a tax increase, you know, so yeah, that's probably why we haven't talked about it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why. Speaking of funding issues...
The second option's interesting, yeah.
Speaking of funding issues, I believe there's, what, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars?
Yes, in one-time funding.
There was kind of one-time funding that was unmarked, I guess. Do you have ideas about that? I mean, I, I don't think we've ever, I mean, we just kinda thrown it on the table here, and we don't...
It's kinda arbitrary.
Yeah, so what, what are your ideas for that?
Well, I just wanna emphasize that it is one-time funding. And, and let me just say that I really appreciate the, the funding that the council provided to us last year for one-time funding, and again, that the county executive is, is providing this year, but it is one-time. It's not sustainable, and it's only just a very small piece of what we need to advance Imagine 2022. So we, we haven't spent a lot of time talking about that yet. I mean, we've had some conversations about using it for security, but not knowing what we're going to be getting from the state in terms of all of the forty-point-six million dollars that's available from the state, we're not...
Plus the security audit that's gonna be required to determine what should be done.
So, you know, we may be looking at, it, it depends on what happens with, with the rest of our funding, to be quite honest, whether we would use part of that to help fund facility needs for universal pre-K, whether we would use it for additional technology, that's always a need.
Yeah, on page seventy-four of the budget book is what we had identified as potential one-time requests, and seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of it on that page is for technology in the schools.
What page is that?
Page seventy-four.
Now, is that, this is kinda a little bit unprecedented in the budget, is that for, when we pass a budget, do we earmark that, or is that, under your understanding, that that money's provided for you to use how you want? I mean, how...
No, typically, again, one-time funding does not impact maintenance of effort. And as the council has done for several years now, they have appropriated one-time funding for specific purposes. We cannot access those funds once the council appropriates it until we expend it and submit requests for reimbursement from the council, from the county.
So I think that's gonna be further conversation.
Well, Don's dressed me down for being negative, but anyway. I do wanna go over some things that's positive. In the last few years, how many schools have we built? We've built Bennett, we've built Bennett Junior, we've built Westside, correct?
Correct.
Okay, renovations, North Salisbury, Prince Street, is there any others? Getting ready to do Beaver Run?
No, West Salisbury, we did renovate Westside immediate years ago, yes, that's right. West Salisbury.
You know, all that's been done was funding from the county, you know? I think it's a positive thing, I think Beaver Run's in line to be rebuilt or replaced, correct? Is that replacement, right?
Replacement school, yes.
That's my understanding.
Most cost-effective way of doing it.
So, I have a question, you all acquired the property next to Beaver Run. Was that done, was that needed for building the school?
To assist with the overall construction, because as you know, what we're gonna do is we're gonna build on that existing site.
Right.
In order to be able to facilitate, that property became available at a, at a very reasonable price, and we felt that it would assist in that whole construction process if we had additional space to bring in the trailers, the trucks and all, relative to not interfering with existing traffic at the existing school.
Okay, all right. So the water problems are all straightened out in there now, right?
Well, as you know, we've, we've hooked up, you know, thankfully, the, the city water, and as a result now, we have done plumbing in the cafeteria so that the cafeteria workers do not have to tote the five-gallon bottles of water. But, you know, we, we're not, we're not spending money to plug plumbing.
I'm talking about basically the whole school.
No, 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 because, well, obviously, we're hooked up to sewer.
We're ready for a new school, I guess is what I'm saying.
Oh, my, absolutely, sir.
Water and sewer for a new school, is that what I'm saying?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's what I'm trying to say, okay. So there's some positive things, Don, and it's all been funded by the county.
And the state, and the state, remember, the state's ninety-seven.
The state is ninety-seven percent.
The counties that come forward, and so, and that's part of our, when you talk about...
Yes, and we're very thankful.
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Can I ask, can I say, I mean, this dialogue is healthy, I mean, and, and the back and forth, and it's not all negative, and it's not all positive. I hear the same things you hear, I've been in the business sector my whole life. I hear that Wycomico County schools are not the schools of choice, they should go to Worcester, et cetera, et cetera. And you're gonna have some of that. Funding, more money, throwing more money at it to Mr. Kilmer's point, may not fix it, that's not necessarily a fix. The demographics, we can't fix either, I mean, seventy-six percent at risk, that takes a lot of funding. But sending the message that we're trying to improve the system and trying to do things and push forward with new initiatives and new ideas of Dr. Hanlon, funding somewhat above maintenance of effort will send that message. A lot of it is perception, the community sees that we fund maintenance of effort, and they may think, well, then the schools are fine. The schools are okay, and we're moving forward under her leadership. But to really make a difference, sometimes you gotta go outside the box and do something different, and that's why we asked for what we did on the maintenance of effort. But we appreciate what you do, we appreciate the schools that you've helped us build, we appreciate the funding we get. But to move forward and to really make these, the schools, that people say, "Hey, I wanna send my children there, I don't wanna go to private school." We gotta send some kind of message to the community that, hey, we're serious about education, and we're gonna go above maintenance of effort to, to send that message, to do something new. It's not just throwing it in the pot to spend, it's specifically laid out for her three priorities. So that, that would be my closing.
John, also, I've been on this school board for nine years. This is the first time we've had the business community behind us like this that sends a message to everybody, that everybody in this county is trying to fix the problem. And all I can say to you, two things, money's there, just whether you want to spend it or not. Don't give up on these kids, you're a product of this system, and I'm a product of this system. Let's make it better. When we were growing up, we had people pushing the envelope for us, let's push it for them, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Yeah, I think we recognize that education is very much linked to economic development and business community, we recognize that. I think what we have to do now, if we have the desire, is to try to figure out how to make the numbers work. Because we're, we're part, we're halfway through the process, and in order to, to maybe even reach the goals that we might wanna reach, we have to move a lot of money around. Because right now, it's not where you all are asking for it to be, right? So that's the challenge for this council, and I appreciate that, Don. So I get this correct a hundred percent here now, total enrollment is up sixty-four students, right?
Over the prior year.
Over the prior year, enrollment's up sixty-four. Enrollment for pre-K will increase by sixty-eight students, correct?
It did increase sixty, that's correct.
Okay, so the basic population of the students... So the basic population of the student enrollment is down four if you don't count pre-K.
That's correct, that's correct.
I just want to make sure I have it all right.
What was that you said? We were talking about pre-K at one point there, and you said something about if they take advantage of it. If who takes advantage of?
Families.
So it's not a mandatory.
It's not mandatory, that's correct.
So how do we know who's going to need it? Well, we know who's going to need it, and how do we know who might take it?
Right.
Take advantage of it?
Yeah.
We don't know.
We don't know. We're estimating based upon trends, you know.
Nationwide trends?
Our own trends of who takes advantage of, right? Approximately eighty percent.
From the chronological order of things, you're asking for the one point three six for the pre-K?
Mm-hmm.
But then you list three point nine as one-time only, which includes the modulators? How would we initiate any progress on the one point three if we don't have the modulators? Other words, how can we fund the one point three million for pre-K if the one-time only is never granted?
So the one-time funding is for phase two?
Right.
So it would just mean that we would have to either work with you in the subsequent years or find other alternative means, if they exist, to finance facility needs.
But how can we begin the process with the pre-K students?
Because we have existing space for phase one. Those eleven teachers that we're asking for and assistance in phase one.
Right.
That's based upon where we have current space. A classroom in this building, a classroom in this building, where we've found space. We know that we can implement phase one in our existing space next year.
And, okay, and in the following year, you would then need the two ten-room, ten-classroom modulators?
And in 2020, we would be asking for additional staff for phase-two implementation.
I was just a little bit confused as to the fact that you, obviously, I guess you do, I didn't realize you had that right now.
It's tiny of it, it's confusing, but in order to be ready for phase two.
Right.
We'd have to order the modulators this year. That's why we ask for them.
Okay, and here I go. Again, and what's going to happen? We're going to put the modulators in, and we're going to put students in them, and then we're going to hear from the parents. Oh, my kids are being taught in a trailer. Right? We're going to hear those complaints.
You should have asked for a new school.
There you go.
That's what we're going to hear.
I mean, honestly, we looked at, in analyzing how we could meet our facility needs, we looked at building a school, we looked at renting storefront, leasing storefront space, and bringing modular units onto our existing property where we have a current administrative staff that would save us in that.
Were the original plans to take them to Long Avenue? And we do that building, wasn't that mentioned?
Not in my time.
Before my time, maybe, I don't know.
That's where birth two.
I don't think that there's enough space there.
We've moved, we've moved the infant toddler program, birth-to-five program there.
Yeah.
Maybe that's what.
Chair of questions there?
Yeah, to touch on what Joe said about those trailers or modules, whatever you call it, they go way back to my time, and I'm not going to say when I graduated from high school. Now, I'm getting to the point that I don't want everybody to know how old I am, because I'm getting up there, but we had them in high school, we had Pokemoke High School, we called them Little White House on the Prairie, because there was a show at, on TV at the time.
Little House on the Prairie.
That's what we called them, the modules, and I had many classrooms in there. So we know, being on the board, we know that every time we build a school, we're going to end up with module, modules out there, because you build a school based on the census at that time, so you can expand. But I do have a question on your request, the two-ten classroom modular buildings, three point two million, is that what they cost?
That's correct, yep.
So we were talking about the business community. We know the previous modulators, the buildings that were out there, were donated by Purdue.
That's correct.
Is there anyone out there that we know that may donate more buildings? That was a nice donation.
Yes, it was.
And taken advantage of.
Yes, and they'll use them for multiple, multiple years, as you know.
That's right.
And so if any corporate presidents are listening to this.
Will accept your donation.
Will accept the donation as we did before.
Does this, you know, the state covers, you know, ninety-seven percent of qualified costs, you know, about fifty, sixty percent of total costs for construction. Does that, do they do that for pre-K stuff too, or is that just K through twelve?
Currently, there is no pre-K funding directly from the state, none.
What about if it was for construction?
Construction, yeah.
Oh, for construction. Currently, the FTE, FTE count is not part of that as well.
So we may not qualify?
Yeah, so any pre-K construction would be one hundred percent county.
Now, they're trying to change all that, obviously, as a result of Kerwin and the not commission.
Was the state furnished ninety-seven percent or whatever for the modulators?
No, they will not.
So we have to pay a hundred percent for certain instruction.
Really? Are you getting after it?
I think it should be noted that we do have Representative Mike Dunn from the Greater Salisbury Committee on Build Chambers from the Chamber of Commerce, and we would like, I would personally applaud them for Wycomico Education Foundation that's been established particularly to address, I think, what some of the concerns were here today as far as, you know, the community getting involved in education, you know, one-on-one, which is very powerful, I think. I think we also, maintenance of effort, formulas, calculations, budgets, and all that aside, I think the bigger picture really is the fact that we need to really look at where we are as a community and as a country as far as education is concerned, as far as kindergarten education is concerned. We've been doing five-year-olds in kindergarten at least sixty years, maybe seventy years. Personally, I think it's time, I don't think it's a negative, to say, okay, it's time to begin starting children in a formal education at four years old. I don't think that's such a difficult theory, you know, to absorb. I think that is very much a fundamental change that we need to look at. And it doesn't matter whether you're liberal or conservative, no matter what the dollars say, I think it's just time that four-year-olds started entering kindergarten, you know, in Wycomico County in the United States of America. I just think that's a fundamental change that we have to look at. What we're doing now may be a century-old, I'm not quite sure, I can't testify to that because I'm not that old.
Kindergarten?
But I can say kindergarten, when I got in, was many years ago.
Was it mandatory?
It was not.
It was not mandatory.
But still, it's five years old. I think it's just time for that change, and you need, you know, we need to just figure out how to make that happen.
John, I haven't heard a great lot, and I agree with you on some points, but I haven't heard a great lot of outcry from parents wanting, you know, I really haven't.
No, I haven't.
So this isn't mandatory, correct?
Correct.
Okay. You know, there's parents that already send their kids to kindergarten, they pay for it. Of course, I know a lot of them will be grateful to have it at no charge. Some of them send them for religious reasons, some of them send them for daycare reasons and things like that. So I'm thinking there'll probably be more for a daycare reason when it comes to public schools maybe than, and it's a good thing.
That's what I initially thought too, Joe, that that, that some, you know, there could be an abuse of the system, and that's in discussions I certainly had here with the Board of Education before. But I think overall, it's a bigger picture, it's not so much that, that we have to be concerned about. Parents may not be coming to us to say that, but sometimes, you know, government establishes guidelines and procedures that they, you know, feel are best for the community. I don't know if everybody stood up and said, we want a red light at particular intersections, but government somehow or other said, well, we need to have, you know, we need to have a red light there.
Most people do.
So anyway, point being, point being, I think that if you don't think that we should be putting four-year-old, you know, four-year-old children in the educational program, I think maybe that's just, you know, it may be sort of old school. I think in this new generation, things are moving much faster, and many more demands are coming much earlier, and we have to prepare our children, you know, not only here but nationally.
And we know so much more about brain research.
Excuse me?
We know so much more about brain research, so.
That's true, that's a good point.
To answer or to comment on your point, Mr. Holloway, we do hear from some parents, the parents that we have to turn away who don't qualify by the existing requirements now in terms of income but can't afford private pre-kindergarten. So there are, there's a group of parents that are, that we're having to turn away. But it's not so much who we're turning away, it's what we know about the importance of educating them earlier. So it's not, this is not a response to an outcry from parents wanting daycare. It's more what we know is research-based in terms of providing literacy instruction and so forth earlier.
To follow up on our conversation, exactly what Joe said, Don said, what you're saying is many of the parents are sending their kids to preschool now, and they are getting some form of education. How much of that falls under the board, the education or training that preschool kids are getting? Because they are teaching kids the majority of the time they're there.
I'm sure I followed your question.
Preschool, kindergarten, daycare.
They're going somewhere, you mean?
They're going somewhere, yes, and they're paying for it.
Right. We have no auspices over those.
None of that falls under there.
None.
I was just wondering where they got their curriculum from, because they are teaching kids.
They are teaching.
And the kids coming out of there are doing so much better.
They are under the auspices of the Maryland State Department of Education, but not under ours.
But not under the board.
Correct.
I think everybody's point, if we get them earlier, to your point, I mean, it's century-old. From a business perspective, we get them earlier, we're likely to keep them.
Right.
And if you keep them, the perception may become, hey, this is a great place to send my kids, because we get them early. They're going private, and then they have to come back to kindergarten or public school. Sometimes they don't switch back. I mean, from a business perspective, it's like hiring somebody right out of college. You hire them then, you're more likely to keep them than if you hire them mid-career.
And I did want to point out on my statement, not everybody gets to go to those daycare preschool programs.
Could I move it back to a little bit of a wider discussion? I know we're trying to wrap up here soon. So maintenance of effort was brought up. So that's a changing yearly target. I mean, let's say we go above maintenance of effort this year. Well, next year, that maintenance of effort increase is built into the floor. And I've asked some of the advocates in the audience, I said, okay, let's say we fund above maintenance of effort this year. Next year, we're going to be having the same discussion. Well, you need to fund above maintenance of effort because it's, you know, constantly changing, and next year's maintenance of effort will build in this year's increase, but that becomes the new floor. So are we going to be having this discussion every year? Is that, oh, Wycomico needs to be better than a maintenance of effort county? Because that's a constantly ratcheting up of, you know, we spent an extra dollar this year, that dollar's built into maintenance of effort next year, so you get the extra dollar next year plus whatever, so.
So are you asking me, if you give me above maintenance of effort this year, will I not ask next year?
We know that answer.
You know that answer.
All right. I think that, part of my hesitation about maintenance of effort is that it locks us into, you know, spending that money for this year and decades to come, regardless of what our revenue is. I mean, we could have another recession where the revenue falls off the cliff like it did eight years ago, and the state law is much stricter now than it was when, you know, I guess it was Joe, and I forget who else, you know, maybe Matt, I think Matt was on the council, you know, when they had to, you know, cut spending so dramatically because county didn't have spending. I don't think the county would have that flexibility now to be able to do that, and so.
Actually, Mr. Kilmer, you pointed out that the MOE formula is based upon enrollment. If enrollment were to decline, MOE would go down.
Yeah, but, and I'm not talking about enrollment decline, I'm talking about county revenue declining. I'm talking about, you know, what happened during the recession was that, you know, county just didn't have the revenue, I mean, you know, and so they had to cut the school system, and the school system took a hit, but.
Well, remember, a county can file with the state for a waiver from the MOE requirement if they can, in fact.
Yeah.
Prove that their economic condition is such that a waiver is warranted. So that provision is in the law.
But it's not, it's not automatic, I mean, the state still can tell the county, it doesn't matter, you still have to do it.
But remember, our county got a waiver two years during the recession period.
But the law's changed since then to make it much more difficult for the county to do it. So, yeah, so I'm just saying that maintenance of effort, for me, is a problem because it locks, it is such a straitjacket in future years, and that, that's.
Right, well.
You know, one-time funding increases are better.
Right, well, with any business, if your product, in this case, is the student, if that, if that, if that need continues to increase, then additional resources are required to meet that need. If those needs decrease, then the formula's built so that the county can fund less money because the enrollment is decreased.
But in the business, if you don't have the revenue coming in, you mean, you know, I mean, you're busy, you know, I mean, you know, you're coming to us for the revenue, you know, and it's a little bit different, but in a business, if revenue doesn't come in, you got to, you have to cut back, and that's what happens.
But going to the, to what Mr. Cannon referred to, the law says a free and appropriate public education must be provided by law. It's not something any of us can change.
But the maintenance of effort discussion is, I think it's a lot more complicated than a lot of people, you know, realize probably in the public about how it ties the hands of the funding agencies. And, you know, I know there's a big push, go above maintenance of effort, go above maintenance of effort. Well, next year, we're going to be maintenance of effort again, you know, I mean, I don't, we're having this discussion, I would like to be somewhere where we can get out of the negativity and get out to the positivity and, you know, that sort of thing, and not have this whole thing again next year where it's, let's talk about maintenance of effort again next year, you know, so.
Well, I don't, I think, I hope I can speak for my colleagues on the school board. We wouldn't have asked for above maintenance of effort if we didn't have the priorities, and we could specifically say that's where the money goes.
I understand.
So next year, if we have those, if we have priorities again, we might ask for that again. If not, we wouldn't.
Well, and I do understand that in every department, I think, I don't think, you know, Wayne's sitting here, I'm sure every department came in and asked for more money than they got the year before. I mean, I don't think there's anybody that asks for less money. I guess maybe I'm speaking to folks in the audience of, you know, this discussion's a little more nuanced than just maintenance of effort, maintenance of effort. It's about a whole bunch of other things, and to your point about symbolism, you know, I've talked with some folks in the audience that, you know, for me, the message that's sent is not that important for me to see actual what gets done. You need to worry about perception too, and I'm not good at that, so I understand that. But we do need to worry about, it's not just about perception, it's about making sure that the issues that Joe raised and that the people who spoke raised, you know, why aren't they sending their kids to school? Why are some teachers leaving? You know, it's important that the, that the money we spend, the taxpayer dollars, go to address those real issues and not just the perception that's out there. So it's a, it's both, and I understand.
It is, it's about money too. We have to, and we have to be accountable for those issues that we have, and I think Dr. Hanlon and her team are working toward that. But I appreciate what you're saying, thank you.
I have one question, and Mark brought it up, and Larry brought it up, but I've never heard a response. A ratio of new enrollment compared to the ratio of new employees, what was it, one-seventy-four to one-hundred-and-seventy-four new employees? The number was, is there a reason for that?
I would need to go back and look at previous years. I can speak to what's in front of me now, and perhaps vaguely, last year.
Yeah, and as our at-risk population has grown, we have had to put in these additional supports for these students, and it's a matter of, in order to maintain the system as it currently exists, if we do not put these supports into place, we will go the opposite way in terms of our performance. We're doing everything we can to maintain and push the needle forward, as Dr. Hanlon has placed, has stated. And unless these supports for some of these students are put in place, which a lot of this funding is all about in terms of the FTE, then we would not be sitting here saying we are pushing the needle forward.
Any other comments? Really appreciate you taking the time to come in. Thank you very much. John, you had a comment?
Yes, I do have a comment.
You want to go to the podium? Thank you.